I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the council of the village of Chase held here at the village office eight twenty six. Avenue and via Zoom today, August twelfth, twenty twenty five to order at four P M precisely as job posted. Number two, adoption of agenda, there is a resolution there, Councilor Torbong, you want to come down?
So move that the agenda on the twelfth twenty five meeting we adopted as second of councillor Herman on favor.
It's carried. Three point one, adoption of the minutes of the twenty July, sorry, the July fifteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Councillor Herman seconded by councillor Connes on favor. That's carried. Public hearings, none, public input on current agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the gallery to provide input on items on this agenda. It's also an opportunity at the end to speak on municipal matters. So at this point, is there anyone physically or on Zoom that wishes to speak on items on this agenda? One, two.
Yes, I do have. I am on the agenda. I'm from Home Zero Collective.
You, I mean, you were gonna be on as a delegation.
Yes.
So we have two. So who wants to go first and name and address?
And group five eight four eight, the L A road chase. Uh, I, I would like to just speak quickly on item six two. The Chase Environmental Action Society is hoping that council will provide a letter of support. And so we wanted to mention that. Unfortunately, we didn't have the information about the presentation for our, uh, the Chase Planet Action Committee in July. Otherwise, I'm sure that they would also be recommending a letter of support. Uh, and I, I can speak again after the presentation, but I wasn't sure whether it would be discussed immediately after the delegation or whether, you know, there would be an opportunity. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Yes.
Carolyn Parks, Nancy thirteen, Oconoggin. This is just agenda items, right? Not some like municipal matters you mentioned both.
Yeah, this, this is at this time for input on items on this agenda.
Well, I'm very pleased to see that the cemetery groupments are going ahead. And eventually we'll be able to add a plaque to the memorial wall in memory of my great, great uncle who is buried there. Thanks.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, not, not seen, not. Go to number six delegations and first we have Lisa Canores, family support worker from Adams Lake. Uh, truth and reconciliation event at Wilson Park and then turn this staff, we have somebody on Zoom for this.
Hello.
Hi, is that you Lisa?
Yes, it's me. Sorry, my video doesn't work so well. I'm out here in Salmon Arm and usually it doesn't come up on the screen. So I don't know if you guys can see me or not, but if not, um, I hope you guys can hear me.
We can hear you, Lisa. So if you would like to go ahead, I'm sorry, how much time we have for these?
I think it, I think it was ten minutes.
Okay.
With questions.
You have the floor.
Okay. Why, quiet up. Hello, my name is Lisa Canores. I'm from the Adams Lake Indian Band. I'm the family support worker. I started about six months ago. I just want to introduce myself. I recently just moved home from Victoria. I went to school at the university there and I'm working for my community out in Chase, but my office is here in Salmon Arm at the Pierce Point location. So I'm really happy to have this time in this space. And so I'm just gonna go into it. And so why I'm here today is I wanted to invite the city and the village of Chase to participate in the Truth and Reconciliation Day two thousand and twenty five. And what this is, it's a sequet mclead event in partnership with the Riverstone Family Resource Center with Ashton. It will be hosted by Adams Lake Indian Band with proposed co-hosting with Niskonith and Squilex Indian Band. The day will be September from eleven A M to four P M. And why I'm here today is I want to invite your organization or businesses to join the Adams Lake Indian Band and Riverstone Family Resource Center for a sequet mclead Truth and Reconciliation Day gathering on September thirtieth in Chase B C. This is a significant event in honor of the two hundred and fifteen children found at the Kamloops Residential School, all survivors and the families impacted by residential school. This gathering marks one of the first times our sequet mccommunity are hosting a truth and reconciliation reconciliation day in active collaboration with our surrounding communities. We believe this is a day of opportunity for all of us to walk together in remembrance, reflection and unity. We have pending confirmation with the co-host of Niskonith and Squilex guided by our elders, knowledge keepers and cultural practices. And so what we are looking for is to have collaboration. We are opening it up for vendors. So for example, like set up a booth for showcase for, for showcasing your services or community offerings at Wilson Parks. We're thinking like face painting, or if people want to help with the barbecue, or if people want to just set up a booth of their services that they do in Chase, we would like to welcome that. And for active participation in the memorial walk. So our walk will start from Adams Lake Indian Band across the bridge and then we will walk to Wilson Park for eleven A M. And then once we get there, we're gonna have opening remarks. We're gonna have, um, an opening prayer from an elder. And then what I'm looking for right now is I'm talking to Chief of Tom in, uh, the local school districts to get the youth involved, to either have them do like a drumming and singing. Uh, it's really important to have the youth and the children in, um, in this event. Um, and so following that, we're gonna have a barbecue from about twelve to one. And then after that, I'm in the works of getting like a bouncy castle. I'm looking at talking to other, um, organizations and other surrounding communities again for like the, um, oh, sorry, something just came up on my computer. But yeah, so what we're looking for is just to have like different family activities uh, and what that looks like on how, um, local communities want to, want to contribute to this significant event. And, um, yeah, I'm just looking for any volunteers for like help setup, tear down. But for me, why I'm here today is I think it's really important. As I was talking to Ashton and Ashton actually got me into this meeting today is like, what is, what does the Truth and Reconciliation Day look like for indigenous and non-indigenous people within the Chase area? I know coming from Victoria, I was there for about five years going to school and working on and off for the university and, you know, to really be able to build alliance and to be able to create a safe community for our youth. And so people can start working together through that respect and that unity and like, what does community look like for the town of Chase? And being a young sequet mcAdams Lake member, it means a lot to me to come home and to be able to host this first ever event within the town of Chase. And so I stand here today to ask how we can collaborate and how we can work together. And, um, yeah, if, if we could have anyone that wants to help collaborate on this Truth and Reconciliation Day, we're looking to confirm any participation by September first. And so I will open it up for any questions or any comments. Thank you and Cooks Jam for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Lisa. Is there any questions from council? I do not see any questions, but thank you very much. And I think it will be a a great event. Events are always good. So thank you very much, Lisa. And I think individuals might get ahold of you. I guess that's what you're asking, right? Individuals can get ahold of you and.
Yeah, so I actually have a letter that can go out specifically for like the, like the booth setup, or if people want to just be a part of the walk, or, um, I'm looking at getting an art mural done with Ashton. And so there's different aspects that if, if people want to collaborate or any art supplies or anything like that, I do have a separate letter and I do have a poster for vendors for booths and, and just, and then I have a poster that can go out, that can just be like put around town too. So I can send that out as well.
Okay, that sounds great. Is there anything else you would like to add?
No, I think that's all. Again, thank you for your time and I hope you guys have a great meeting and, um, I'm just really grateful to have this space today.
Okay, Lisa, thank you, Cooks Jam, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now have six point two. Man Deep Singh of Home Zero Collective. And there's a little bit of rating there, but, uh, I'm just gonna turn it over to you. If I say your name correctly, I'm.
I'm in deep saying, yes, that's right. You're pretty close.
So you have the floor for ten minutes.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'm Amman Deep Singh. I represent Home Zero Collective in Vernon, B C. And, um, I'm here to talk to you about improving the energy efficiency of our homes in our region so that, uh, we can save money on our utility bills and, uh, improve, um, uh, reduce carbon emissions from our homes. Uh, I'm gonna be telling you about a pilot project that we've done in Vernon and how we're gonna be scaling it up across our region. I've got a presentation that I'd like to share with you. So I'll share my screen. Okay. Can you see my screen right now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, terrific. Um, okay, so, um, I'm giving you my introduction and just a little bit of background as to who is sponsoring us and where we're going. So we are funded by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And, uh, the goal of our engagement with them is to develop a bold transformative, replicatable building retrofit program. And the funding is provided by the Community Efficiency Financing Program, and we've been engaged with them since twenty twenty one. Um, and to date, we have completed a feasibility study, a pilot project and program design, and we're moving towards a capital project as part of the funding stream. And so far, they've committed, this is F C M through the Green Municipal Fund, have committed eight hundred fifty thousand dollars to our project, B C Hydro two hundred sixty three and homeowners around eight hundred thousand dollars as part of the pilot project that was completed last year. Um, here are, uh, some of the pilot homes that we retrofitted last year. The goal of this retrofit is to, um, improve the energy efficiency of homes. So these homes ranged from nineteen eighteen to twenty twelve. And the retrofits were completed in two neighborhoods in Vernon. And, uh, and the reason I'm here to talk to you about this is because we want to eventually bring this program to your municipality as well. Uh, these homes, all of these homes received, uh, a full house retrofit, including solar panels, heat pump, heat pump hot water system, uh, E V charging outlets and building insulation to improve the performance of the building. All homeowners, uh, reduced their, uh, energy bills significantly. And, uh, their homes are running much more efficiently than before. Uh, here are some of the numerical results, uh, summarized on the right side here. So on average, forty six percent energy consumption reduction and eighty eight percent greenhouse gas reduction as measured by the EnerGuide audit. Um, and here's, uh, how we carried out the project in Vernon and I'm showing this so that, uh, you know, we would look to replicate this in your community as well. Uh, we first started with the feasibility study where we looked at all the different neighborhoods in Vernon. And, uh, using the census data, we determined, um, you know, what categories the homes are in. And we found that about seventy two percent of the fifteen or seventeen thousand homes in Vernon were in reasonably good condition and minor repairs were around twenty three percent and major repairs were acquired by only five percent. And this helped us to develop the program where we created two streams for the retrofit. Uh, one is the overwhelmingly large stream where you don't need to do very large, um, scale retrofit. It's just, um, retrofits that we can complete within a four to five day period. And then a future phase where we would do, we would do the building envelope upgrades as well. Uh, the major challenges we were looking to address in this project was high cost of retrofits. Um, there's a large number of homes that need to be retrofitted. We don't have an adequate workforce. And the change for the homeowner is complex where they have to manage all these contractors, learn what needs to be done, calculate, um, you know, what the energy savings would be. Um, and finally, how do we make this model replicatable so that once we're successful in one place, we want to be able to do this in many other places as part of the, uh, overall objectives of the initiative. The solution that we proposed is that, you know, instead of doing this on a piecemeal basis, meaning a home gets a heat pump, another home gets solar panels, another home gets a hot water tank. We said, let's look at the whole house, how we can upgrade, upgrade the whole house together with all the systems so that it's very convenient for the homeowner and we can complete in about four to five days. And instead of looking at it one house at a time, let's look at it on a community scale so we can bring down the cost and, uh, make this, uh, affordable for everyone with high volume procurement and streamlined operations. And the results of the study and, uh, were very good in terms of bringing the costs down. Um, so the way we approach homeowners for this is that we say, um, uh, you know, we want to bring your utility costs down. So let's look at what you're paying right now. So here's an example of how that's done. Um, so let's say it's two hundred eighty dollars a month for heating and electricity on an analyzed basis. And, uh, we retrofit the homes with, uh, renewable energy systems that reduce the emissions and generate power. And with these systems, uh, we're able to bring down the cost substantially and in this example, save fifty dollars a month. And now we use the savings of around two hundred thirty dollars to pay off the retrofit in about fifteen years. After the fifteen years, the homeowner has significant savings. So here I've summarized that for you. Um, so firstly, you know, utility costs keep going up whereas loan payments are steady. So homeowners will save on the increase in cost of utilities. They receive new equipment, meaning, uh, heat pump or a hot water tank. So they won't have to replace their existing equipment in the near future. So that's an immediate savings as well. Uh, if they don't do the retrofit and their furnace breaks down, you know, that's a five, six thousand dollar expense uh, that they will incur. But in this program, they won't incur that because the monthly costs go towards paying down the new equipment. And after the loan is paid off, uh, including solar, the homeowners save several thousand dollars a year. And solar panels come with a twenty five year warranty. And the other systems, even if we have to replace, um, the heat pump and hot water tank once in the twenty five years, the homeowner still comes quite a bit ahead, uh, in overall savings in thousands of dollars. Um, the way the program executes, uh, is streamlined, so it's very easy for the homeowner. We look at their last two years of billing. We propose the retrofits for their home. We outline all the rebates and incentives and financing options. And then we develop a post-retrofit financial outlook, meaning we say to them that this is what we expect your monthly bill to look like after the retrofit. And this includes the utility costs and the financial, um, the financing payments. So it makes it easy for a homeowner to make of, uh, a decision once the numbers are presented. Um, and the whole process is coordinated beginning to end. And we do line up the financing for the homeowners. We look at all the available rebates to bring down the cost so that the whole process is very easy for the homeowner. Uh, this is our team. So, uh, I'm the founder of Home Zero Collective. Uh, we have, uh, Tom Burkeout who used to work at B C Hydro. He's one of the, uh, authors of B C's Building Electrification Roadmap. Miriam Rezai used to work at Clean B C. So a lot of the programs are in place right now that are the energy savings programs were, uh, developed by her. Uh, Sandy Kersey used to work at Tocco Industries and is serving as our CFO right now. Trevor used to be the CFO at Tocco. Uh, Rob Montis is from Oconoggin Solar, Jeff from Falcon Engineering and Ashley Lubick from Oconoggin College. So our, um, so our pilot project is now complete. And, uh, we're now moving towards a larger scale project. And we are requesting F C M for a five million dollar grant for this project. This, uh, funding stream comes with a two million dollar loan loss reserve, which is in addition to the five million. So this helps us to attract, um, private, uh, bank financing. So with the loan loss reserve in place, if there's ever a default that cannot be recovered, the loan loss reserve kicks in to protect the financial institution. So this helps the homeowners to get, um, uh, great, uh, uh, great interest rates and lending conditions. Um, and then Home Zero started out as a nonprofit. Uh, and we've been a nonprofit for, uh, about five years. Uh, as we've completed this work, our intention is to bring down the cost of retrofit so that everybody can afford them when we're working on a community scale. Uh, we are, uh, also proposing to F C M that, you know, after the five million dollar grant runs out, it would be really helpful to bring in private capital so that we can scale up the program to serve many more regional municipalities. And, uh, so to do that, we've incorporated a, uh, for-profit, uh, company as well to attract private investment. And F C M is aligned with this. And we will be going through a competitive process for this grant application um, with, uh, competing with organizations across Canada for this funding. So, um, uh, our approach to this project is to, uh, start in Vernon in just a few neighborhoods where we've already done the pilot and, uh, once we've completed pilot of eleven homes, we had lots of people come and attend open house events. And this allows many of the neighbors to get to know what work was done and the bills that, uh, homeowners saw after the retrofit. And, uh, it really created, um, a community, uh, a community initiative effort or a community, um, initiative that lots of people signed up for. And, uh, you know, once we have done, uh, let's say a hundred, two hundred homes in Vernon, we plan to then go, go and do the same in other neighborhoods and other communities as well. The goal is eventually to retrofit in all the communities within the B C's interior because the program we are proposing is self-sustaining. It does not require ongoing government funding. So I'm here to respectfully ask for, uh, a, a letter of support from your, from your, um, municipality. We have received letters of support from Vernon, Salmon Arm, Kamloops, Kelowna, Karamias, Ashcroft and Lumpy already. And, uh, you know, when we receive the support from you, it goes a long ways in, um, helping F C M see the value that they are adding to our municipalities. So, um, yeah, so that's, uh, that's why I'm here today. And this application is due on September first. So if the council approves the letter, we're requesting that the letter be, uh, provided as soon as possible so we can meet our deadline. Um, that's the end of the presentation. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Okay, is there any questions with councillor Torbong?
Yeah, this is a similar program that Fortis, uh, for same thing, isn't it?
Uh, so Fortis B C has a program that offers, um, rebates for, uh, let's say dual fuel heat pumps and so forth. And, uh, so they offer a rebate and, uh, even the province offers rebates and F C M will also offer a rebate. So we will take advantage of all these rebates to bring down the cost of the retrofit. And, uh, so Home Zero, uh, actually does the work. So we're not just providing the rebates, we actually engage with the contractors to complete the retrofit on a whole house basis. So, um, it's a full turnkey solution.
Sir Torbong, and the, this retrofit, though, you're, you're saying the payments will last for fifteen years?
Yeah, so let me just, uh, give you an example of, uh, what that looks like. Let's share my screen again. So, um, here's an example of what that can look like. So this pricing that you're seeing is from the pilot project. And it includes these four systems, an air source heat pump with a natural gas or electric backup, heat pump hot water system, level two E V charging outlet and solar panels. And, uh, solar panels that are the maximum size of the roof. And this is, this, uh, retrofit package will reduce your energy consumption by fifty percent and emissions by eighty five to a hundred percent. Now, this in the pilot was around fifty five thousand dollars, which is fairly expensive. Here's what we plan to do. Um, so let's say the package cost is fifty five, we offer a rebate of five thousand additional rebates and the government, uh, from the government can be sixteen thousand, we bring down the cost to around thirty four thousand. And, uh, when we amortize that over fifteen years, you're looking at about two hundred seventy four dollars a month. And if the current utilities are two hundred eighty dollars a month and after the retrofit's around fifty, then overall you're looking at say three twenty four, which is very close to the two eighty dollars a month. But in the long run, um, you know, if you do the retrofit, your costs are more stable, meaning they don't go up as much. If you don't do the retrofit, which is shown in the white here, your costs go up substantially over fifteen years. And, uh, so in this model, the way it's presented as an example, after the loan is paid off, the homeowner will save about four thousand dollars a year in addition to having costs that are not going up.
At this time, I'm gonna ask the corporate officer. We've gone over the ten minutes, so do we need to do anything? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, we're in the question and answer period of the delegation, so you're pretty carry on back and forth.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to the C E O.
Yeah, I'm so, I'm just wondering, this is the, Joe, I'm the C E O here. So I just have a couple of questions for you on this. So what I'm hearing is that rather than piecemealing, as you mentioned earlier, you know, furnace here or a heat pump there or solar panel here or whatever, your, this program does all of the stuff that is gonna make that house really, really efficient all at once, basically.
Yeah, in about four to five days.
Right. And then the homeowner actually gets a loan, which they pay back over fifteen years. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's one of the options. And, um, there are other options as well, but yes, uh, that is one option. They can use fifteen years to pay it back so that their monthly payments are relatively small.
Um, so the other question I have then is, um, I'm thinking that there probably would be homeowners in Chase, for example, that would be interested in something like this. Um, so I'm just wondering if, uh, so if our council provided a letter of support for you to go to F C M to get this non-pilot, so this would be the real thing going, then, um, how long might we, how long might it be until Chase gets onto the docket, so to speak?
Right, right. So, um, the way we are anticipating the program to roll out is March twenty twenty six is the earliest that we would get approval for the funding. And, uh, you know, And you know, it will take uh about six to seven months for us to get the process started. And we will do about one hundred homes in Vernon to get the ball rolling. And then after that, we will start going to different municipalities and doing the retrofits there so that homeowners in that area can see um the examples in their neighborhood. So we're looking at, you know, two to three years. Um because this is a fairly large-scale undertaking for it to start to uh get established and then scale up. And at that time, uh you know, we will be, uh when we get approved, we will be in touch with you to let you know that we're approved and this is what we're doing, these are the plans. And then we can start to say, okay, when will Chase um be scheduled to receive their first retrofits?
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? So staff has recommended, recommended or suggested?
We have a suggested recommendation.
Suggested recommendation as there is a time, is that correct?
So I already mentioned that their application for funding has to be in by September first. So there's a bit of a time.
So by doing this, there's no financial
Nope.
encumbrance to the village, there's no obligations on R and L, it's just a
Basically, it's selling Ammon Deep and F C M that we're a- alongside these other communities like Karamias and uh I think it's at Lundy and Ashcroft and uh Kamloops and Arm that we think this is a really good project, will support, so he would have more support for him in application. And ultimately, down the road at some point, Chase would be on the, on the list, and then homeowners could sign up to have this stuff.
That's right.
The village would change this.
If if he chose to at the time.
Correct, yeah. And it sounds to me like Ammon Deep's company does all the work. So they organize the, pick out the people or have some sort of process to pick the, figure out which homeowners wanna do it. And then organize the contractors and get the work done, and then they can start seeing their savings.
That's right. That's right. We make it fully streamlined, yeah.
Any other questions from council? What's council's wishes here? Councillor Herman?
I'll move that council provide a letter of support to Home Zero Collective for their application to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities for funding to complete peak energy retrofits for homes in B C's interior.
We have a secondary? Also, councillor Connaught? Any discussion from council? Get all in favor? That is Kerry, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm very grateful for your support. And we look forward to being engaged and keeping you in the loop on our progress. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, great. Now, we're good to move on to reports, sir? Now, number seven, reports, me and your council reports, we have the new system up and running. There are also staff reports. Do we have any questions from council on any of the staff reports? Do we receive this for information? Is that something we can do? Staff? Someone to make a motion?
I'll move the chief of report for second by councillor Herman, all in favor? Kerry? Number eight, unfinished business, eight point one, Chase cremation garden contract award. Uh there's a report from the director of corporate operations, so through the C A O.
Mister Mayor, it's my understanding that um that our director of corporate operations is going to give a little bit of a recap of of this project um from when we brought it, council in the past.
Good, thank you.
Just a quick review.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of council. The Chase Cremation Garden is on the agenda. Council's being asked to award a contract to uh Urban Appeal with the lowest bid. And I'm just gonna do a quick recap on how it got here. So this isn't something that just happened overnight. This has been a process that's been at least four years in the making. This is part of council's good governance. In earlier in your term, you did a strategic plan. And at that time, it was identified and noted in your strategic plan that you wanted to modernize the cemetery in three ways. One was by updating our software, so that we got off of a paper-based record system. The second was to update the bylaw to meet the consumer protection requirements and to sort of just bring it out of uh antiquity and and bring it into currency. And the third was to improve the physical condition of the cemetery, these upgrades. In twenty twenty-two, thirty thousand dollars was budgeted for some design work uh for the physical upgrades, another thirty thousand dollars was allocated for the stone orchard software that's been uh implemented. And in twenty twenty-four, uh phase one was this, which is on the screen before you, was budgeted but not built uh due to a very busy construction season, not a lot of contractors available. Uh it just got to twenty twenty-five. Uh the budget remained, the budget is coming out of the uh community, the uh, what's the restart?
Growing.
The growing communities fund. So there's no taxpayer dollars involved. It's uh, uh this cremation garden will be an accessible, hardscape and landscape sanctuary, complete with uh proper seating for people. Uh it'll have a columbaria, which will generate revenues there. It's sort of a vertical cremation uh cemetery. They'll have a memorial wall, which the people have been asking for, so they can put plaques of their loved ones. It's visible, but you can just go to one place and see all the plaques. And also have a scattering garden where people can eat and uh uh spread smashes, stereo. And so I've just got a couple of drawings here to go through. This is an over, this is a planned view of the of the design. Uh the columbaria, uh while there's a number of them indicated, there's only one that's been budgeted for, so I think there's four in total. Uh uh this is a phased project, so there's just one that's going in. Uh this area here is the scattered garden. And then there's benches and seating here, there's benches and seating here. And then at the very back against the hillside is a memorial wall, which will be a, but a eight foot or ten foot uh concrete wall where the plaque will go. And it will be surrounded by some landscaping, it will be a nice uh peaceful, quiet sort of solid two place to remember loved ones. Here's what the, what the benches will look like. They're just uh Yes, they're Uh the memorial wall is, it looks like this. So this is an example from another community, it's a smaller scale. But one that's proposed is much larger uh for, it'll allow room for expansion over the years. And columbaria.
Just back to the C A O, and this is being brought forward to us, the council to
Basically, because, so as the director of corporate operations mentioned, so this has been in front of council a number of times. Um there's been budget put forward to do certain things like the the design and um and the upgrades to the software and whatnot. So basically, we put this basically out to um to tender because council had discussed during budget uh to put uh funds from that growing communities fund, which that was at one point five million dollars we got from the province. So a portion of that funding council had agreed to put it towards this part of the cemetery upgrades. So uh as you can see with the director of corporate operations report or memorandum, we basically put it out uh to three companies. Uh two tenders were completed, and we would like council to uh allow us to award um the contract to get moving with this, with this project.
Hey, thank you very much. So there is a recommendation there. What's council's wishes? Councillor Herman?
I'll move that council award the contract for the Chase Cremation Garden to Urban Appeal Landscaping in the amount of four hundred eighty thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents to be funded by the growing communities fund and the remainder, remainder of our part of the reserves.
And we have a secondary? Councillor Torbon? Okay, so we will open it up for discussion, any discussion? On the council on awarding, on the awarding of the project? Councillor Connaught?
I'm not against the project, it's where it's going. My uh over where the, those people from the highways have all their junk parked there. That was proposed to be an extension of the cemetery. Um it could go there, instead of right in the middle of the existing cemetery, which has taken blocks up now. I don't even think there is a cremation plot left over there, is there? You guys are up on the hillside, picking through rocks for very sometimes, so.
So through to the
Actually, Mister Mayor, I think maybe the corporate officer and the director of corporate operations and the public works manager might be able to answer that. But we did bring this forward before um at this location, so I'm not sure, maybe Sean, you have something?
But we can, just for clarification, because I asked to, we can ask these questions, but my understanding is at this time, we're just being asked to award the project, we've already had
That's right.
We've had this discussion, it's been going on for three or four years.
That's right.
Questions, questions, questions are allowed.
I realize that, but I'm just getting my two bits.
No, I'm just, so questions are allowed at this time.
Yeah.
So councillor Connaught, you had some questions through the C A O?
Yeah, and he's asked, he's, he said, yeah.
So I gotta go there, I know, I'm, I'm
He's just stating his fit. He's loud.
Did he, did he get an answer from his questions, though, the way councillor Connaught did you?
No, I, I'm just boasting my opinion and that I know it's gonna go there. We know that, just, I think it should go someplace else, and I, I mean, it's a great thing, yeah. It's not my opinion, it's not the spot.
Any, any other discussion? Seen on, all in favor? Opposed? Councillor Connaught is opposed. That's Kerry. Number nine. Before we go to number nine, thank, thanks to the staff, that's it. What is that, three or, three or four year project?
It's been, it's been a lot of work in the making, particularly the, well, all of it, but particularly, if I can just say, the stone orchard portion. So as councillor Connaught would know, we always had all of our records on paper. Some of them are in index cards, some of them are on a map, and some of them are over here, and some of, so having them in a, a really well-determined uh and electronic form really helps us, and it helps people when they come in too.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to number nine, new business. Nine point one liquid waste management plan draft application, there's a memo from the manager of public works, so through the C A O, is there anything that staff was willing, wishing to add at this time?
Um I will see if um our manager of public works wants to add anything. I think his memorandum is pretty self-explanatory. This is something that we have to do under the certification that we have for the sort of treatment plan. And if, uh like, may have some additional comments.
Uh yes, thank you, through the, through the C A O. Um so as a part of the upgrades uh that we are doing in the homes through the grant, um the province has moved us from a uh permit to an operational certificate in run the summer system. Um so in April, and we were one of the kind of last remaining communities in all of British Columbia that were operating on a permit instead of this whole provision certificate. So in April of this year, uh we received that operational certificate from the, from the province. Um and one of the, so um with the operational certificate, there are provisions um that we need to meet under the Environmental Management Act. And one of those provisions is the liquid waste management plan. Uh so we need to proceed with this, uh the province has asked us for our liquid waste management plan to be kind of brought up to speed, we haven't updated it in the last, by the time it, it will be submitted. It will be twenty-six years since the, since it was last looked at. Um and so this will be a requirement regardless of whether or not we apply for this grant. So there is this grant available um that we can apply for, and what we're booking for is a council resolution to apply for this grant for up to three hundred thousand dollars um to update our liquid waste management plan. Okay, thank you very much. Uh do we have any questions from, of, of, let's, what's council want to do? Any recommendation and then, uh, may, councillor Connaught?
I'll move that council supports the village's application for funding through strategic priorities fund under the capacity building, saying to complete a liquid waste management plan applied for the village of Chase, and that's village of Chase will be responsible for any cost overruns in the project.
We have a secondary? Councillor Farnum? Um, one question I might have, do we, do we need to, through the staff, do we need to mention any marks of money here or not?
Um
Might add to formation?
Yeah, at this point in time, the grant only allows us up to three hundred thousand dollars. So the, the, the recommendation does include that we would have to pay for any cost overruns, but we're anticipating it coming around close to that at this point in time.
Any other questions from council? Councillor Connaught?
Yeah, uh, this um is it gonna have a limitation on how much sewage that we can put down, there's a lot of meaning that, you're gonna do a study? Is um how much more that we can get in, into our system? Is this the idea?
Uh so the, the idea of the liquid waste management plan really is to ensure that uh as council and as staff, they're actually looking after our system. So the province and the federal government has been kind of tired of us coming or communities coming, you know, cap in hand. Um if we're not maintaining our systems, if we're not looking up at the asset management of it, um they want to ensure that the sustainability of our sewer system is, is intact. Yeah.
Go ahead, if you
Yeah, so like a liquid waste management plan, basically what it does is, it takes a look at our overall system. It takes a look at the amount of paint that we have, the age of the paint that we have, the balloon systems or the treatment systems that we have in place. Uh it develops cost estimates for replacement of all of our uh infrastructure there. Looks at the timeline for the replacement of all of uh that infrastructure. Um it looks at different approaches and technologies.
Um, it looks at different approaches and technologies, and they look at uh, if, if the lagoon system, if we were looking at transitioning um, twenty years out, that sort of thing, it might start taking a look at what other um, technology we might use and what uh, land might, we might put that on, for instance, sometimes it's quite a different, quite, quite a lengthy time to acquire property to put a uh, lagoon treatment system or, or any sort of treatment system on, and so you need to do that pre-planning. Uh, it takes a look at the regulations and standards and make sure that we're meeting all of those and make sure that we're aware of them. Um, it also takes a look at our official community plan and at the regional growth strategy and make sure that we're aligning with with those different uh, documents. Um, and then the final one, which is probably one of the bigger one, is it requires us to present this to the public and uh, get support for the plan that we're looking at doing, so if we are looking at taking uh, additional sewage from another community, for instance, uh, our community members will have input on that, it's not just us making that decision or council making that decision at this table, um, that, that we do get some public input on, on some ideas going forward, so that's kind of what the liquid waste management plan um, looks after and does and forces us to do with our pre-planning. Uh, we have, that's, that's all I have, so.
If, if that kind of covers it, it's sort of, sort of like the asset management plan of the sewer treatment system.
Yeah, I
It helps us determine whether, you know, we can include, you know, some additional users on the system or not, I mean, it helps us with kind of all that stuff.
You have anything else to add, Counselor Connor?
No, that's pretty well answered, and that's my concern is um, our system is this big and more shit's coming in, is There's building everywhere, yeah. But the news was getting bought right off the shelf quickly, we're elderly.
Do we have any other questions from council? They will put up to the vote all in favor? Eric, honestly, thank you very much, again, the staff, the major projects on the go. Uh, we now move to number ten, anybody have a notice of motion? Counselor Potter?
Just dig one over there. I'm giving a notice to council on bringing forward a motion at the next meeting to direct administration to get cost effectiveness of the installation of a generator at the pump house on Pine Street, water intake for fighting wildfires within the village boundaries.
Okay, thank you. Any other notice of motion there? We'll move on to number eleven, opportunity for public to speak on municipal matters, this is an opportunity for members of the gallery to provide input on any municipal matter, it's not a back and forth system. You're welcome to provide input on the Director of Corporate Operations, is that your title? Sorry, hold, we have fifteen minutes for this, correct? Okay, so we'll open up the floor, how many people wish to speak, one, two, three? Who would like to go first, you, you each get five minutes if you wish. Name, that name and address.
Phil McKenzie, twenty-nine Beach Crescent. I was wondering when the promised rock pit for Beach Avenue is going to be putting in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and talking about wildfires and everything, has anyone, it was talked about putting a fire hydrant or asking V L A if we could put fire hydrants on their line going through town? When we're doing Shepherd, is there going to be a fire hydrant, or have we even talked to V L A about having permission to hook on, because it'd be great to have a secondary water source just in case it happens.
Okay, thank you, staff, so staff are just, are taking these down. Do you have any other issues? And that's name and address.
Um, Angie McLaren, for Susan's place. Um, I really want to thank you for supporting Almond Deep, same with the Home Zero Collective. It taught me really well with the climate committee on our, on our hope to do a presentation to council on the zero carbon step code on new builds, um, so this will tie in perfectly well with it, and that will happen as soon as our presentation comes in back home from vacation. And we will be letting you know when that will happen as well, so thank you for doing this, it's awesome.
Okay, thank you, was there one other?
Earl Parks Mints, eight thirteen Oak Norton, just a couple of items that I hope uh, are on the radar of council, uh, one of them being is my husband and I have suggested reduced speed limits on Chase Street. Um, the other day, we saw someone in a scooter going straight down the middle of the street, there's parking on both sides because park would, guests have to park somewhere. A park side, live in the center, um, and we do see a lot of vehicles at speed on that street. And I know there was some discussion of perhaps reducing speed limit on Main Street of Village as well. And uh, the other item my husband and I are concerned about, um, and I don't know if there's a possibility or not, but it's, it will be good. Removal of barge and jagged rocks beside the middle part of boat launch. Uh, these are dangerous, both for individuals getting out of their boat, to perhaps have a whole girl over there, there's no beach to stand to go up on. Um, and it's right next to the ramp, and very often you have to wait because someone's loading a boat or, or putting a boat in the water, so you, you gotta wait somewhere, and it is dangerous for boats and individuals, spreading huge rocks next uh, to the ramp, uh, and when it's in use, and you have to wait, so I hope you'll the works might look at you that at some point in time, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, is there anything else? Nobody on Zoom? Thank you very much, uh, we have no in camera. We have no recent in camera items. Need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Counselor Corbom, Counselor Herman, all in favor? That is Carrie, Counselor Herman. Meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.